Everybody in?
Yes.
All right, it is 7:01 and I'm going to call the Tuesday, January 23rd Select Board Meeting. I'd like to remind everybody that we are recording this meeting so you can get added on Facebook. I always get that wrong. Is there any public comment?
Yes, I have a little public comment, please.
Okay, Dave?
Yeah, Dave Polito from Solid Waste Committee. I just want to speak in favor of renewing the Lincoln County Recycling Contract, which is on your agenda tonight, because I understand it, Lincoln County has been very flexible, cooperative, have a longstanding relationship with them. We feel that the money involved is reasonable and that it would be really hard to do better. So I'm hopeful that you will vote to renew that contract tonight.
Okay, thank you. What, were you done?
Yep, all done.
Okay, well, thank you. Anything else? I don't see any.
I gotta add Sandy Maggie.
Is any items to be added?
I, I just wanted to acknowledge here, I will be sending out two pieces of correspondence that came in this afternoon in the mail. One was a letter from John Stone, and I'll be putting that in your inboxes tomorrow. There also was a visit from the Career Center with some employment resources, but those came in very late and you'll be getting them separate. I just wanted to flag it that it will come up and officially be on the next agenda.
Okay, I've got nothing. Do you have anything, Rich?
Um.
Stand by. No. Okay, do you have anything, Roland?
I'm good with what we have on the agenda.
Okay, cool. Looks like it's yours.
All right, and I will just point out that we don't formally have scheduled appointments, but Chris's update will be close to 7:15 or 7:20. He is up in Woolwich right now.
And Brian.
And Brian is going to be right after that one, too. So the next item of business on the agenda was to approve the minutes of the December 12th meeting.
I moved approval of December 12th and January 9th as presented.
Right, and that is seconded by Rich. Any discussion or tweets?
I didn't see anything.
Good. Okay. And it is three to oh, perfect. In your packet, you also had for review the December, December financials. They were emailed out from Mary as well as the December hauling numbers. There also was a draft changes to the shellfish conservation ordinance. And if there are no objections by the board, we will get that ordinance off to legal counsel.
No. All right, hold on. What I recommend with all ordinances, we hold them for a future meeting, we review them, and we make a decision at this board level if any changes we feel require legal counsel review. Just to save cash, every, just you're aware, you weren't here last year, every ordinance does not necessarily need to go to legal, depending on the changes, significance of changes, if it, any kind of infringement on other ordinances or law. And I sound harsh, I'm not, but let's hold these for a future
Perfect.
meeting, February. They're all due no later than the first of March.
Right.
So maybe the second meeting in February, we can compile all of the ordinances and review them in a regularly scheduled meeting.
And I do want to just, and I do just want to flag on top of that, the Conservation Commission does have an ordinance that will be coming forward through a similar process, but I was asked by the chair to stick it on the next agenda. So I just wanted to flag that we're in receipt, but it'll be coming later on. We had no assessing items on this agenda. Under correspondence, I just wanted to flag for the board that the governor had a special meeting of the Climate Council today to discuss the impacts of recent storms. I was able to attend that via Zoom and the recording will be made available to folks that weren't able to attend. There were some good resources in there about potential ecological impacts to Georgetown that hopefully we can either partner directly with them or through one of the conservation groups to access. I also wanted to let you know that the main Department of Labor's EBLAS should be in your inbox. They send this out weekly. Additionally, I also included in your packet an email from the Island Institute regarding business resilience storm recovery grants. The Island Institute is making available grants to aquaculture, fishing, and other groups along that side of things in response to the recent storm. The grants can go up to $5,000 if any residents in town reach out to you and you don't have that email readily available, send them my way and we'll point them in the right direction.
If I may, Tyler, we discussed last week, happened when we had kind of the roundtable. Do you have a belly button? Do you have a point of contact for clam, oyster, lobster? Have you made any traction on that?
A little bit of traction, but it's not complete hopefully by the end of this week. And I wanted to get specifically this grant information to those belly buttons.
You're the best. Is that just for private or is that, would that be something if we, since our, like any stuff for the wharf needed, if there's something like that, or do we know?
I can reach out and ask if we qualify. I believe they were gearing it primarily towards private and nonprofit side of things, but you know, we are not a profit business anyway. So I will reach out to Island Institute and follow up.
If we need it.
And in your packet, I emailed over the main municipal associations, two recent legislative bulletins. I do want to flag that when the third one comes out, you're really going to want to jump to page four. And then in regards to senior property tax stabilization, but we'll talk about that a little bit later in Mary's report. And lastly, we had a funding request letter from the Bath Brunswick Respite Care Organization. And we will be passing that letter on to the FAC. We did in the office inquire about Bath Brunswick Respite Care's previous support and involvement in Georgetown, and they promised they'd be getting us that information. So when I have it, I'll make that available to the folks that need. We had no other formal correspondence under continuing items. We had nothing yet, but I do just want to flag for the board that as repairs and things start going back the way they used to be from the storm, some of these might be popping back up, particularly permit by rule and NERPA.
Do we get notified if somebody's septic or something blew up and they had to do a whole cleanup under the building or anything like that? Is that anything that we would be notified of? Where it's, where it's sewer or anything like that?
Chris would be notified. I'd like to think Chris would be notified as.
Okay, I'm just curious that. I know that there is at least one spot on Indian Point where they had the main DEP response crew on a big suction truck down there. I'm just curious. Yes.
Three, one fifty-four, right?
Nope, I was just curious.
Yeah, I think that's when Chris took a bunch of pictures out, right?
Right, okay.
Yes.
Sorry.
And a whole bunch of oil and seawater from a basement. It was trapped.
And now in the town administrator update, I just wanted to remind the board that I will be attending the NIMs class on Zoom on the 31st. And I encourage any and all board members that want to join us or join me here at the office to attend that. That is a mandatory class by decision makers. However, if the 31st does not work for you, for the Zoom that's being hosted by the Arustic EMA, I was told by Hannah Dixon this morning that we should be having something pop up in February. So we know storms come up, so try to be there if you can. If not, I will hold down the fort. I also wanted to just update the board briefly and remind them that we will be having a Zoom here on Friday with FEMA, or not Friday, Thursday, regarding the kickoff for the Robin Hood Road Culvert Project, really just going over reporting requirements and so on.
Do we have a date that, no kidding, they're going to start?
There's a window due to the environmental limitations. I do not remember what that is. I think it's June. But I'm just, I'm not positive.
And just, we need to coordinate, make sure the fire department and SAG, et cetera, was all aware that there's going to be really limited transportation across that culvert.
Right.
And we have plenty of time. It's just something, please, keep it in the back of your minds.
Absolutely. And I did want to let you folks know as well that as part of this project, at the recommendation of the engineers in standard practice, particularly on the creation of some of the culvert materials, they need to put those out to bid earlier in the year, or it could delay the whole project a full year, just on the nature of the supply chain. So if you do see in the Times Record in the coming weeks, an ad from Georgetown in regards to that, no surprises. So, and I did want to touch base on the Lincoln County Recycling Contract with a brief update. At our last meeting, I inadvertently skipped a step completely on sending it to Solid Waste to begin with. So it will officially be on the next agenda, but I know you had some comments you wanted to share, Rich.
I do. And so the Solid Waste Committee is aware, there is an incinerator up in Bangor, and more municipalities than we care to count send their recycled cardboard and mixed paper to the incinerator, and they pay recycling fees, which then turn around and we have the mixed paper and cardboard get burned. And before I approved the contract to pay $12,000 to Lincoln County for them to turn around and incinerate our cardboard, I wanted to verify I knew where the end result was going to be. So when I asked last week, I wanted to do research, the research was on Lincoln County's plan for our recycled material, and we've gotten an answer. So that will be approved in the near future. But, so the Solid Waste Committee is just aware that a lot of folks pay to recycle stuff that is then eventually burned. And I don't know that that's in the intent of the program. That is all.
Any other comments on the recycling contract? Seeing none, I also wanted to just let folks know that insurance regarding the decking at the wharf, we received further word today, but all of the damages that we received down at the town wharf have been kicked back by insurance, including the damage to our float, including the damage to the ramp and the erosion side of things near the Love Nest. And so I, I just initially, it was about decking, but today we received that call. When we received the official letter, I'll make sure you guys have a digital copy for your records. And lastly, on the agenda, I wanted to point out on my part of the report, tomorrow at 9:00 AM, I will be headed to Reed State Park as part of the MEMA delegation to really just see the damages and figure out what is happening there and what the next steps will be. And I just wanted to lastly point out two other small things that I didn't stick on here, because popped in my head this evening, Main Revenue Services at a future board meeting would like to meet with the Select Board at one of our scheduled appointments to discuss the constitutional requirements of assessing personal property tax. That is not a, personal property is in your real estate, but it's the tax on equipment and businesses, something Georgetown currently does not participate in. They are looking to potentially join us at the next Select Board Meeting, and I just wanted to formally let folks know that they're asking and we'll work with them on dates to confirm. And I also very quickly am working on exploring Survey Monkey as a potential resource and what some cost benefits analysis could be on whether or not that's a resource the town would like to use on soliciting feedback, surveys, et cetera. It is the gold standard, but gold standard items come with a cost. So I should have more information on that in the near future. And with that, if there are no questions on what I brought up, I could turn this over to Mary for her update.
1950.
Oh, yes, it is. And is Chris on yet?
I don't see him there.
I don't, but I see Brian, and would you mind if we jumped on Brian first, because I know he is on call in Bath? If Brian is ready to jump to his part of the agenda, it's a brief update from the Fire Chief regarding the storm response. Thank you, Brian.
Sure, thanks, guys. So you guys got the report I sent over last week? Just go over briefly. So on the storm in the tent, which is the Wednesday storm, we responded to five calls for service during that period of time. Two of them for trees down, both involving wires. One was on Five Islands Road right by Ledjmir, and another one was down on So Whelan Road. Went over there, secured the scene, kind of what we could safely, and removed it from the road. We got, so we ended up open to one lane for a little while there. And CMP was real quick on the Five Islands Road tree. So that was kind of pleasantly surprising. Excuse me. And we also had EMS call in there also. While we're doing that, at that time, we ended up with a call for a structure fire in town, down on Davis Landing. And we responded over there with the personnel we had, determined that there was actually a fire in the building, but due to the safety of the responders and the building being unsafe to enter and get into, we weren't able to do any kind of extinguishment. Checked on it hours later, and the fire basically put itself out. It smothered itself, and the building was still there. Before we left, we secured it, made sure it was as safe as we could make it. And yeah, so unfortunately, that same building ended up floating away on Saturday during the storm. So it is no longer there. But we also went out to Farmington Way for a footed basement, helped some residents out there. And that was pretty much what we had. So it's quite busy in the morning. But other than that, we had just, just five calls for that one, and we had no calls for the storm of Saturday. So again, pleasantly surprised, but we'll take it. So the, excuse me, also at the same time, we ended up with their structure fire EMS call. That was going on at the same time, was the same time that the road in Rousek was being closed due to flooding. So when that structure fire call came in, mutually was unable to respond down here. We were really on our own for that one. So I'm glad it ended up being pretty much not a big deal in the end. So very fortunate that way, and we'll take it. So do you guys have any questions on that?
I don't, I don't have any questions.
Good turnout, good job.
Yeah, cool. Well, thank you. Everything seemed to go pretty smoothly, because you know, when I was running into you during most of that stuff anyway, so.
Yeah, as well as we can go.
Exactly. All right. Well, thank you.
I think you had a great response from your team on a miserable day to be out anywhere. Thank you.
It was, we were lucky to get the people we did, and so, yeah.
Thank you very much, Brian.
Welcome.
All right. I did shoot Chris a text to let him know that anytime he pops in, we'll defer to him, but in the meantime, we'll jump back to Mary.
Sure. Um, as Tyler alluded to earlier, we received our, what, what we received was a note from Main Revenue that told us we were receiving a stabilization reimbursement. But of course, it was much smaller than I expected it to be. And as Tyler said, we received 56%. And they're hoping to get us, they allocated 15 million. And then unfortunately, the municipalities have requested over 26 million. So Allison Heffler has informed Tyler that it is on for, you know, the next budget cycle, which hopefully will be in the spring if they approve it. And if, you know, we, anyway, anyway, that's where that went. Um, then, as you can imagine, we have received a bunch of property tax revenue wins, so I've been moving money that saved from Bath Savings over to Northeast, First Federal, and next will be Andro. And then you have your December financial, you receive the December financials. And you'll see that, that they're very low, and the majority of that comes from the roads budget. And that he just hasn't had any, any work done at this point. So you see them having a negative balance for approvals that I did. So that's a, you know, huge budget. And it just hasn't been spent. So when you see us only at 23% when we're expecting to be at 45 or something, that's why. And then, as Tyler also mentioned already, we, I had gone online and filed claims for us for the planking on the dock, the erosion on the dock, as well as the second commercial float that was submerged, and will need to be pulled and repaired, or it's already been repaired a little bit so that they can pull it out. And all of those came through as denied from the insurance company. So you know. And in our talks with MEMA today, receipts, all that stuff is critical. So anything we're doing, keeping receipts on, logging time, things like that. So we can keep track of all that. And Chris has been very good about doing that. So. Yep. So that's about it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mary. If no one else has anything, Mary, question for you? Since we're only getting 56% of the funds that we were expecting, that's going to impact this year's budget, what we're currently living in. Instead of getting 100% of the return, we're 56%.
Right, we're at, yeah.
So we're going to have a significant deficit.
We're about 18,000 shy.
Okay, I mean, that's I think $18,000.
Is that covered in our overlay, or is that what the overlay was for? Or is that what part of the?
You know, you, you got a thing, over 200 in the overlay.
Yeah, we have, but I'm just.
Yes.
When, we're going to have to make up for that in the FAC budget, it's being compiled for this year. And hopefully, there'll be a reimbursement. So the undivided fund will be maintained a year later. If the legislature actually pays us what they said they were going to pay us.
Yeah, and honestly, I don't know how they can at this point with everything.
Because they never give us anything that.
Well, I understand that, but this is, this is different. So, you know. They, they got everybody on board stating that they were reimbursing the municipality. So I just, you know, so we'll see, we'll see.
We'll find out what they do.
We'll, we'll fight about that if we have to.
Because it becomes an unfunded mandate.
Another one. So, another one of many. So, yeah.
I'm going to admit Chris Will Coxon, and we'll give him a moment to join, and then when he is ready, Chris will be up to update us from his perspective on the storm as EMA Director. He probably didn't hear that, so. There he is.
Hello, can you hear us?
Oh, yeah. I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, awesome. We're all ready for you if you're all set to go.
Great, I appreciate it. Sorry for being quick in and out. I'm at the Woolwich Planning Board Meeting. And so tonight, I just wanted to update you on a few things. First, as a code enforcement officer, I just wanted to make you aware that we have remedied two code violations that we have talked about in the past. Paul Kennedy, well, actually, it's Moffett, 1U19, Map Lot, 791 Bay Point. We do have a contractor who is going to do the work out there. So come spring, it's a seasonal dwelling, so it's not being used, but that, that septic is being, going to be remedied and brought up to the design that was done a few years ago. The other one is that on Lot 13U21, 4 Blueberry Hill, we did end up issuing, or we are issuing a building closure notice that Kristen helped us pin. And that is being sent and posted, will be done this week. They've been notified, they're fine with understanding. They, we do have a meeting that's in the works between Jerry Mitchell Site Evaluator, Dale Savoy, myself, and the homeowners, hoping to get that remedied as well. And the house also is vacant now, so that is being mitigated at this time, too. More to the point for tonight that I was asked to come was regarding the storm damage and my role as emergency management. This morning, if you haven't already, if you haven't already talked about it, if you have, I apologize, but we did have a meeting down at the town wharf with representatives from MEMA, FEMA, and Sag, Sagada Hut County EMA. And they were able to document and look at the damage that was done down there. We briefly spoke about things that were concerned about as a town as far as private. That will be a separate issue, but nevertheless, we, it's pretty much getting the ball rolling. FEMA's hope, well, I'm sorry, MEMA is hoping that FEMA will initially, eventually determine these two storms and be treating, treating them as one, both the 10th and the 13th storm. I just wanted to make you aware that on Thursday evening, I'm going to be, I was invited by the Indian Point Association to take part in the Zoom where I can better help more people at once understand what may be asked of them regarding permits, both from the town, DEP, Army Corps, and even more to the point floodplain in regards to this. The town has been issued, I mean, excuse me, the state has been issuing on multiple levels what, what they're hoping to see happen. And so we're going to continue to work with that. Up to this point, it's been on a case by case basis, and that will continue. And things are being kind of separated between emergency repairs, repairs, and then rebuilding. And because of the extent of the damage for private property owners, just basically having to go out case by case to help them determine what, what's necessary for the town, for their permitting. Finally, just mention that we're working with the town office and TOPMB, document damage to the wharf in preparation to, for reporting to the state. Even talking to FEMA, not apart from this morning, it doesn't seem to be an if, but when the declaration comes by, and I'm, I'm pleased, having gone through the May Day storm, that we are in a much better place as far as going to report all of our damages and necessary documents for this storm. So. Is there, be happy to answer any questions you might have from me or anything that, just basically wanted to make you aware of what's, what's taking place and what's happening.
I've got nothing. Have you got any questions?
No, Chris, thank you.
Bronwood, do you have any questions for Chris?
Uh, no, I don't think so. I think it's, it sounds as if you're on top of the situation. At least as on top as one could be.
Right, that's the key.
I don't have anything to add, so thank, I mean, it sounds good to me. So thank you for
And thank you for ducking out of the planning board meeting to join a select board meeting.
Right, well, we're, we're dealing with LD 2003, so there's other things I'd rather be doing, but nevertheless.
Drinking. Have a good night, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
All right. And with that, we'll be back to the agenda. Under committee updates, we were in receipt of the Solid Waste Management Committee's meeting minutes for December, and a copy of the Financial Advisory Committee's kickoff meeting of January 9th minutes. Under membership, we had nothing new, and I would turn this over to the board members for their liaison updates.
I didn't have any meetings, so I've got nothing to add.
That's the best kind of meeting.
Updates for the TOPMB, they've hired a neighbor to help clean up the debris around the wharf. That's going to be ongoing, and they're just trying to get their, you know, head wrapped around getting as much debris out of the water to prevent damage to boats and our floats that are still floating. It's going to be a long process. The next is going to be for the planning board, two updates. One, they're wrapping up their compiling of man-hours for reimbursement for LD 2003. You guys are aware that the state is going to pay up to $10,000, I believe, $5,000 if we have a, if we don't have a growth zone, up to $10,000 if we do. And we do not have a growth zone in our comprehensive plan. So the state has a formula to, for volunteer hours, even though we don't pay our volunteers, the state reimburses the town for volunteer hours. Tyler, for you, if you can look through, we have two years now of LD 2003. Our last legal services, we sent ordinance changes to them to make sure that we were up on speed. And this year, we've talked a number of times with Kristen. So if you can look into the historical files and see if we broke out our ordinance changes for, to comply with 2003, that would help. And we can take that legal time as well as our volunteer time, our codes enforcement officer time, our town office time, and we can send it up to the state, and as long as it's under $5,000, we should eventually be reimbursed.
Or at least 56% of it.
56% is better than a kick in the butt.
But, and just as a follow-up to that, I did reach out to Kristen to get some estimation on time. And I did get that late last night. So that conversation is ongoing, but I'll look into historic here at the office.
We have one year, initially 2003, or I can't even remember the number it was before 2003. We sent to our last legal counsel, because initially, it was, I think, June 30th or July 2022, was when it was supposed to be enacted. And because of the pushback from communities across the state, it became July 1st, 23. July 1st, 23, and then December 23 for half the state and July of 24 for the other half of the state. So there's, I apologize for the homework that you have to do, but any funding that the state will pay us.
Absolutely.
Well, there were always certain ordinances that we forwarded on to legal counsel.
Right.
And, and we would, we made notes of.
Right, right. Minimum lot size was changed, building impairment was changed, shoreline zoning was changed. Were the three big ones.
Yeah, awesome.
Yep, that's what I have for a liaison update.
And Bronwyn.
Committee meetings have been fast and furious. The harbor committee met. The solid waste committee met and then had a workshop about their ordinance. And they've been exchanging emails all week in preparation for another workshop on the ordinance on Thursday. And the conservation commission, as previously reported, I think has drafted and a new ordinance governing their activities, which we will see the, at the next meeting. I don't think I have anything to report substantively from those meetings, except that they're ongoing.
Thank you, Bronwyn. And now we would turn that over to the board member updates. Anything outside of liaison updates that we wanted to share?
Uh, I can't think of anything off the top of my head. We got, we did chip some trees on the edges of the road on blow down some of those two storms on Indian Point and Kennet Point, because we'd gotten that cedar tree on Five Islands Road last week, I guess, right after the storm. That's all I can think of.
Thank you, John.
I'm gonna echo what Chris said. For our neighbors and we, to get this out. Demo permits are required. The planning board and Chris had a discussion at the last meeting. They're not gonna change after the fact. Permits would be double the cost of, for a late permit. We all understand the time, critical nature of getting rid of a lot of this debris. But please, for a number of reasons, demolition permits are important, because if we have it on the tax rolls and it's no longer on the property, then the homeowner should not be taxed for it. And the way that we account for taxes increasing and decreasing are demolition permits decreasing, building permits increasing. So it's important that the town has an accurate picture of what is up, what's standing.
They need to get a permit for the storm to demolish it?
If.
I'm just curious, I mean, if, if the storm erased it.
No, 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 for that stuff, we're gonna have another, we're gonna get through.
Okay.
Gathering that data. But there were a couple of buildings that were damaged beyond repair.
Okay.
That were still standing. And after the storm, after the dust settled, they've been removed. Videos were posted online and I'm not telling stories, I'm not naming names, it doesn't matter, but that we saw them removed keyed us that we need to make sure they're not on the tax rolls come April 1st. And that's important for the homeowners, because why pay tax on something that's no longer existing? This morning, and this is this 30,000 foot view, I called the town office, April 1st is our tax deadline. If something exists April 1st, it's taxed. If it doesn't, it's not. It is the homeowner's responsibility to make sure that we accurately reflect what property they have. So the town office with the SWC board, with Chris, they'll, we'll come up with a plan that someone that lost something of value, real property, a wharf, a dock, a building, a porch. Anything that they would have been taxed on last year, if there was a loss, then some means of accounting for that will go out in the next couple of weeks. So we're all on the same page and we don't have a whole bunch of abatement requests after the fact. It's much easier to front load this info into Trio and let Chris and Tyler and Bill work through it.
And additionally.
Has any of this information already been reported as damage? Because you were asking everyone to report damages, right? So do we have any information that already answers some of this? Or do we need another form that would be filed essentially as a an early abatement request or a statement of loss to determine tax value?
So in terms of the data, I do know on the EMA side of things, Chris has compiled a lot of public infrastructure and what's been reported to him. Additionally, we dug into some old town reports today to look at old forms that we used in Georgetown. Where folks would fill out and just note changes to their property. Now, that form would definitely need to be revitalized a little bit, changed up because it's a different need. I am intending to connect with Chris in the near future and I'm adding another person who's waiting in the audience, I apologize, but I wanna make sure that we're capturing the data that's necessary, while also not creating more paperwork that we're gonna keep here in the office forever. So ideally a one pager and again, to make sure that things are done right. And we have a good, accurate snapshot of what happens on April 1. Though realistically, it is a period of time, April 1 and after, where those records are updated in Trio. And I do just wanna let members of the board know that we have had one phone call come in where a member of the public whose property was damaged, was inquiring, do I have to pay my tax bill on the property? And unfortunately, the answer is yes, because those buildings did exist as of April 1. So that abatement thought has been circulating for a little while and I think it's really good that, you know, we front load now. So in the summer, we're not facing Peter to pay Paul. So does that answer your question, Bronwyn?
Pretty much, I guess. And even, even if, even though of the actual assessing happens over a period of time, the value is supposed to be fixed on April 1. So we've had people who were, who got abatements because they said April 1st. We'd only finished three quarters of our, of our building. And we, we've honored that. So it's important, as, as Rich says, that homeowners understand the need to report before April 1st, anything that's not there anymore. And to get a permit to demolish the remains, if that's what has to happen.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And typically, just on the backend side of things, and this is me nerding out a little bit. When those permits come through, there's actually a very easy way in Trio to flag. You know, we know a new deck was added to a property. We flag that and we have somebody go out and assess. In this instance, we just wanna be able to then, we have a list of properties. Here's a picture. You say your pier is gone. We're gonna send somebody out to take a picture to prove, yes, that pier is gone. We have a date stamped from April 1. We know what stood, what didn't stand at that point. So absolutely, we just wanna get firm data and we also wanna find a way, and this is part of the reason I'm just exploring Survey Monkey on a tertiary side, a couple of different fronts. But I do think that we wanna find a way, if we can make forms available online and ease of folks in this process to report what likely to many of them is a very traumatic experience, to make that easy, user friendly, while also getting us the data we need to accurately charge them the right amount come next fall.
Yes, I'm gonna finish.
Yes.
Okay. And a public service announcement, once again, more information will follow. But some of our non-conforming lots with non-conforming structures, if they were damaged. Their state, the state has a timeline of one year to put a permit in to rebuild. That one year is already counting. And that's not a town rule, that is a state rule. So I just, we're gonna get as much information out to everyone of our neighbors as soon as we can. This is gonna be a big process, something none of us have had to deal with in this scope or magnitude. But we wanna make sure that if someone has a structure that was damaged or destroyed, that they follow the timeline. So their building permit is approved when requested and they don't miss the deadline. Because with the grandfathering after a year, in some instances, that's never coming back.
Right.
And that is all I have.
And did you have an update Bronwyn on the personal side or on the board member update side?
Uh, no, I don't believe so.
And so the next item on the agenda would be old business. And as of now, there was none, but I promise we will be bringing that back with some items soon. That was my attempt at a joke and no one laughs but Mary. She, I teed it up for her earlier too, so. And lastly, now we'll get into new business. There were two items, the first one being a discussion regarding dumpsters for the storm cleanup. I did send out a memorandum in your packet on Monday and you should have it physically. Just by way of background, last Wednesday, we met here at the office with members of the solid waste committee, select board members. There was a conservation committee representative to really discuss what was going on in town in response to storm debris cleanup. There were several ideas that were thrown out and ultimately, as everyone here at the table knows. You know, we wanna make sure we alleviate pressure on the transfer station while also meeting needs, if there are any in the memo. I broke down the information I was able to gather, some of it anecdotal, some of it direct, some of it in writing, and I included those emails. I think peripherally, there is a baseline need for some folks in town on storm cleanup. Though I think to that point, there are a couple of remaining questions if we were to go that route. Particularly, when would we want them placed to start? How many dumpsters would we wanna utilize if we went that route? For how long? And, you know, strategies we could take if we were doing that. I do know that in talking with the Indian Point Association, Chris had reached out to them with some questions on what their need may be. They followed up with a couple of very good questions, which to me indicated, yes, there is a need, but they'd like to know what materials are we taking? What materials are we not taking? Are we doing this in February when the ground's frozen and they're not here? Or are we doing it in April, springtime, et cetera? So I did my best on gathering the data I could, though with the short timeframe. I guarantee there always could be more information. So I would turn this over to.
I think we still, there's time to figure out, we still have more questions, probably more questions than we have answers at this point. Until we get more input from some of the people, you know, impacted. But we've got a lot of stuff down, so we know. And apparently it wouldn't take an awful long time to get this stuff.
Dumpster's a couple days.
Exactly. So I think we just need to hear more from the people who've been impacted or the, or the areas that have been impacted. And then try to figure out what's gonna be a better time. And I mean, from my, from my point of view, it's probably gonna be closer to April than it is right now. Just as far as stuff being thawed out and actually being able to, you know, work the, work the stuff. So, I mean, I think we just got more, more questions. Yes, Bronwyn.
Well, it, it seems to me in reading the comments from the Indian Point people, and they were one of the hardest hit areas in town. That there were two kinds of waste that they were identifying. On the one hand, yard waste, which definitely they're not ready to move. And won't be until the ground is, well, until the waste isn't frozen to the ground. Probably April when they can get to it. The other type of waste that was mentioned was things that are wet from flooded crawl spaces and basement areas. And those things you might wanna dispose of immediately. If, if they're rugs or anything fabric that holds water. You'd wanna get it out of the space. So that, if there's a lot of that, that might be an earlier reason for it, for a dumpster. But if the waste is structural wood and pilings and stuff, it seems like that either could wait, be piled up to be removed. Or could wait until the April timeframe. And the other observation I would make is that I think two weeks is a long time to leave an open dumpster in a public location. It seems to me if you give notice and you set a deadline, get, you know, give people plenty of time to get organized. But limit the time that that dumpster is available. Otherwise, you get all this stuff that the solid waste committee graphically described at the last, at the roundtable meeting, that doesn't have to do with the storm and will gum up the whole works. And my only other comment is I think it would be great if, if it were possible to get a dumpster in the area of Indian Point and any other neighborhood that was specifically impacted seriously. But putting a dumpster in the wharf, at the wharf area is just asking for trouble. That's all I have to say.
Any input, Rich?
No, have you replied to Carrie?
Not yet. I wanted to get some feedback from the board tonight, at least a little bit. And I know Chris will be talking with them on Thursday, so I wanted to get some good data by then.
Okay, for the question she asked, I mean, if we go with Riverside, which doesn't have a limit on drywall and all the other madness that we can't dispose of through our
Right.
Own, we know the cost, 675 first two tons free, $125 per ton after $5 a day over a week. It's pretty straightforward. If there are 30 yard dumpsters and we can share all that with Carrie. We can share that with any neighborhood that is concerned. You know, that any info that we've compiled from Riverside, if that's where we're leaning to go, because they're so easy to work with, then we can certainly share any data we have. Rocks, we're not putting rocks in the dumpster. Put rocks back in the ocean.
The, even the, like the blown up trees and stuff like that can go on the stump dump. It wouldn't necessarily have to go in the dumpster.
Yes. Yeah, absolutely.
But there is, I mean, there is, there is, are, are things that can be, could be separated without a major hassle. So that would be one of the other things to point out to her that organic isn't the right word, but you know, more like the trees and the shrubs, stumps, whatever you wanna call it, that's gotten washed up. As long as it doesn't have nails and all that stuff in it, it would be something that we'd be able to dispose of in the stump dump.
And we can work out, I mean, that would be road commissioner stuff, but we can work out a collection.
Or something, yeah.
For organic material.
Right.
I mean, really.
Right, so again, there'd be a schedule and a set of published guidelines. And is that publishing that becomes really important?
Yes.
So everybody knows what's happening.
There's still some work to be done for sure, but that's getting these things figured out and then getting them on paper will make it a little bit easier.
And I know Indian Point has a pretty robust fire prevention network. Where they bring out in the spring and the fall deadfalls that they collect on the side of the road and the Indian Point Association has people collect them. So we'll probably work in conjunction with them.
Awesome.
Uh, not trying to pass the buck, we can certainly, we have in our budget to have the road commissioner have a crew go out as well. But there are a lot of ways to eat this elephant.
And the last thing that I just wanted to touch on too, at our meeting that we had last week, there was a discussion about using some debris on trails. And it seemed like that was a great idea, but we weren't 100% certain on need. I do know that in the chair of our conservation commission connected us with KELT. And KELT does have some specific, either long boards or short boards, if they're in good condition could potentially be used, but that still gets us into that staging question on, where do we keep it? So I just wanted to make sure I gathered as much info as I could before this week, recognizing there probably would be more data we need. So do we have a rough idea on when we'd like to circle back on this discussion? So we can have a target date or? circle back on this discussion so we can have a target date or as needed?
If I may, the, I think the first step, we talk with Jim at the transportation tomorrow and make sure that if any big lumber comes in, pressure treated, that falls, meets the criteria of Ruth's request for KELP. Crossboards or long planks for boggy areas, that we ask Jim to graciously, or his guys, to put it aside. And if you can reach out to Ruth in the morning and find out when, how long, until she can pick it up? Or if there's someplace that KELP could stage it.
They are still internally, and I included the emails. They're not 100% sure they need it yet. They're having those discussions internally.
And that's what I'm saying, reach out. And if some big stuff comes into Jim or the transfer station, Wednesday, they're open tomorrow. Open Saturday and Sunday. Instead of all of it going into the dumpster, say, Ruth, if we have something big, where can we stage it and for how long? So you can make a decision. If it comes in tomorrow and we don't have a plan and it goes into the dumpster, if Ruth comes back Thursday and says she needs it, it's already gone. Just, that's what I'm saying. Let's try to get a little more background on the, the near term. We certainly need to circle back and that would be, you know, it could be every couple of weeks.
Is there some way we could let the individual homeowners know that if they've got something that's obviously reusable or in decent shape, if they could keep it out of their waste stream and then have somebody KELP-ish go pick it up after the fact or something like that? Because that would save a lot of stuff in our sites.
Absolutely.
I don't, you know, some, some way of getting that message out?
We could potentially get something, a blurb up on the website.
I think that would probably help out as much as anything, keeping the amount.
I think if, if you give it to Jim Peavy, his, his daily email circulation would be a ready audience.
It might just lessen one layer of moving the stuff.
But it's not, I mean, I think, I think Ruth was being as helpful as possible. And the question will come down to whether they actually know they need this stuff and are willing to store it.
Once again, more questions.
They obviously have land, there must be a place they could put it. But then again, if they don't use it, what happens to it and who trucks it back? That, questions I'd be asking if I were on their board.
Tomorrow, the weather's going to be crappy. No one's going to be gathering up wood from the shore on a snowy rainy day.
Right.
But just more homework we can do and it can be behooves.
And the last item on the agenda tonight was the, we received word yesterday from a Georgetown resident and who serves on the Patent Free Library Board. And this year, it is Georgetown's turn to have a second person on the board for the year. And so I did get this on the agenda, worded as an appointment tonight, though recognizing we may want to see if folks wanted to apply, see who might.
I was going to suggest, Tyler, that we talk to the Richards Library, specifically Lauren Bray, to see if she'd be interested. But also, if there's no one from the Richards Library Board that wants to do it, the Historical Society is the other organization in town that frequently coordinates with Patton Library on their history series because they do town by town programs. And Georgetown is often represented. And if neither of those organizations have somebody who wants to step up immediately, then we could do the regular recruitment effort, stating that the position's available and looking for volunteers. But I think it would be most appropriate if somebody from the library wanted to, to be part of it, because they do a lot of work with Patton and they rely on their resources. If that makes sense, I'd be happy to reach out to the Richards Library Board of Directors. And if nothing comes of that, then to the Historical Society.
Bronwyn, my only input on that is John is missing an opportunity to support his community as a member of the Patent Board. And it was a pleasure, John Collins. I served on that board for two years. And.
You retired also.
Pardon?
You retired also.
I am. I wasn't then, I was busier. But it was, it was.
I think their meetings are Tuesdays at 4:30, as I recall.
I, I agree with you. I think your idea is awesome, Bronwyn, and I'm all for it.
I, absolutely. And with that, there was no.
One more thing. I make a motion that we approve the solid waste contract for Lincoln County, as discussed at the previous meeting.
My only question to that, Rich, is that because it wasn't put on the agenda as an agenda item for action and there's financial.
Yes.
And we didn't add it at the beginning. Is that, I don't know, do we have to? Okay, then, perfect. I'm, I'm new, so I figured this is a good time to ask.
Works for me. I'll second it.
All right.
I'm okay with it, but I don't think that the Solid Waste Committee has even seen it. And I know that, I know Dave came on and wanted us to approve it. That's because they want to continue with Lincoln County. But from a procedural point of view, I, I feel like they, they knew it had been discussed because it, one of their members was present at the last board meeting where it came up. And they felt this is very early in the cycle, much earlier than is usually done. And that they had plenty of time to look over the numbers. But they haven't seen the numbers. And so I'm not sure that we need to do that tonight. That's my only observation.
Bronwyn, it was presented the last meeting. I asked it to be tabled and it was approved. And Dave came in this evening.
I know, but I don't think he's seen it. Did somebody send it to him?
He, the, the chair of the committee urged us to approve it.
I know, you made the motion. Go ahead and vote. It's all right.
John, you're it.
I, I seconded it, so I guess we discussed it. I'm voting. I guess we can vote on it. I'm for it.
Sure, I'm for it.
I abstain.
All right, and with no further business on the agenda, I turn this back over to you, John, for public comment.
Is there any public comment? Yes, Allison?
The Committee, Solid Waste Committee has seen the Lincoln County contract because Tyler did send it to us. And, and I just want to say just for the members of the public listening to this, that it's very unlikely that Lincoln County is sending any of their recycling to incineration.
They're not.
They're, they're a member of the Main Resource Recovery Association, which helps them broker all of the recyclable commodities. And this is one of the reasons that Lincoln County, sometimes they accept some waste and other times they don't. You know, the whole issue with the plastics, the not number two plastics, it's because that's market driven. So that's just what I wanted to throw out there. Thank you.
Anybody else? Public comment? Bob?
Yeah, going back to your discussion on getting dumpsters, I, I would strongly encourage that if you're going to have dumpsters for people to load, that it be supervised. If, if there's nobody there to attend to it that has a clue as to what's going on, you're going to find people throwing stuff in there and it's not going to be, I hate to say it this way, it's not going to be in an orderly fashion. You'll have a lot of wasted space in the dumpster. If you have people just throwing stuff in there willy nilly, it doesn't get fully utilized. I say that speaking from personal experience. I've loaded a number of dumpsters at the Maritime Museum and, and other places throughout the country when I was in the military service. And if people don't know how to load a dumpster, you're, you're going to pay twice as much as you would otherwise. So you need to have somebody there to keep people from throwing things that should not be thrown in there. And you need to have them there to give some supervision and recommendations as to how to best do it. You don't want to have dumpsters that have eight foot high walls because people can't throw over those walls and they will not walk it in. You need to get lower walls on the dumpsters. If you're going to have dumpsters, you, in order to make it economically feasible, you've got to have supervision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for a public comment? I don't see any. So I would, at that point, entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
In favor?
All right, there you go. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.